I'd like to call this meeting of the Westland City Council to order, please. We'll begin with the Pledge of Allegiance tonight led by Amore Moore and Dustin Mullins.
(Inaudible) 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 If you'll stay right there, Councilman Londo will be right down and talk to you.
(Inaudible) Good evening, everyone, and say hello to Amore and Dustin who are here with us tonight. We'll start with, we'll start with, thank you, we'll start with Amore. Amore is a sixth grader at Adams in Ms. Krupski's class. Her two favorite subjects in school are science and math. She enjoys hands-on science experience and multiplication. In her free time, Amore loves to read and take care of her many cats, who are always getting into kind of mischief, getting into mischief. What kind of mischiefs are they getting into?
They like to climb on top of, like, one, Harley always finds a way to get on top of the counter. Quinn always finds a way to knock down something, and Felix always finds a way to get stuck in something.
Wow, that was a great description. When she grows up, she wants to be a veterinarian. Amore, we have a certificate here for you from the mayor's office, the city clerk, and the city council. Go ahead and give this to you. Hold on to that, you want to step down? Oh, make sure you put your hand back. Sorry about that. All right, nope, stay up here, you're not getting off quick that easy. All right, next up is Dustin. Dustin is a sixth grader at Adams in Ms. Krupski's class, who is very respectful and kind. His favorite subject in school is math because he likes the challenge. What's so challenging about math?
Just, um, I don't know, it's just...
It's challenging, right?
Yeah.
Very challenging. In his free time, he likes to play video games and football. What's your favorite video games?
Um, Madden and, uh, like, like, um, Call of Duty and Fortnite.
My nephew loves those two, loves those two. All right, big one, what's your favorite football team?
Pittsburgh Steelers.
Ooh, good one. You didn't say Detroit Lions, so you didn't get booed out of here. When he grows up, he wants to be in the military just like his uncle. So that sounds great. Dustin, we also have a certificate for you as well. Have you hold on to that? And if it's okay, I'd like to invite up Ms. Krupski and then the parents as well. We'll take a quick picture and if anybody wants to say a few words.
(Inaudible) Do you want to say a few words?
Um, I've been teaching in Wayne Westland for four years now, and it's students like Amore and Dustin that make it very enjoyable for me to come to work every day.
Oh, thank you. All right, well, how about one more round of applause for Amore and Dustin and for Ms. Krupski and everyone at Adams. Forgot to, forgot to mention, I'm an Adams alumni too. I was going to hit you with a trivia question to see if you knew who I was, but, okay. (Inaudible) Thank you very much. Thank you.
Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Green.
Point of order, please. Excuse me, present.
Counselwoman Green, present. Councilman Hammond.
Present.
Councilman Hurd.
Here.
Councilman Hersberg.
Here.
Councilman Londo.
Here.
President Godbell.
Present.
Coram, Mr. President.
We'll move on to announcements and presentations. Lisa?
Good evening. Thank you for the time this evening. I just wanted to let you know, we had some good news that was announced a few weeks ago. Unfortunately, I wasn't able to make the last meeting, so my apologies, so I'm here now. And then I wanted to just give you a few updates on some grants, as Councilman Johnson had asked for. Unfortunately, we were not able to make the last meeting when the bicycle pedestrian safety grant, pedestrian and safety education grant was announced for $20,000. We did assist Bruce Thompson when he was here with that application last May, and we were pleased to find out that the city ended up getting that award. So congratulations to you on that. I think it'll go a long way with all of the activities you're trying to create around walking, biking, and all of those other facets. So again, congratulations, and we were pleased to help out. My colleague Fred was very helpful with that grant. Unfortunately, he just had surgery recently, so he couldn't make it tonight to join me, but he sends his best wishes. As you recall, over the last couple of months, we had 108,964 awarded to the police department for technology, and we had $46,700 awarded to the Jefferson Barnes Learning Lab through the Justice Burn Grants, which I think will be very helpful moving forward for both groups. Right now, we, we just learned recently that the Wayne County Parks Millage Grants have, will be allocated now. Commissioner Hades was able to secure 8,690, and Commissioner Anderson was able to secure This is money that you receive through the Wayne County Parks Millage Grant, but this is a heavy lift. This is actually something that the mayor assigned to our team to take care of and handle with the administration, because there is a lot of paperwork and information and follow-up that goes behind these grants. We've been managing these for several years now, and I think they're excellent. We're working with the mayor's office right now, and maybe he can shed some light on where the money's going to be spent during his report. And I know that our fire chief has been waiting, as I have anxiously, for these assistance of firefighter grants to come out. We were, we assisted with the several grants that are pending at the federal level, and we've been really trying to push our congressional and senate members to make calls on the city's behalf, because we know you can use these monies, this money in your departments. So just a quick rundown, the assistance to firefighter grant, there's quite a few. We have a quint for $750,000 that we're waiting for, a bariatric ambulance for $240,000, a facilities improvement grant for $156,000, equipment including coats and pants, $88,000, and then we are working right now on the SAFER, we've been working with the SAFER grant as well. Unfortunately, the one thing that's really has me just very frustrated, and I'm sure many cities and many grant writers, is the fact that for some reason, the federal government will not release this COPS grant funding for hiring. We've been waiting, they're still fighting over sanctuary cities issues. It's, I think, chief, it's been a few years since we've had an opportunity to even apply for that. That's not helping our cities, because those grants have really made a difference, especially in communities like Westland. So I'm not sure what's going to happen. I wish they would just release the grip on that grant, because I think it could be very helpful to your community, but right now, we're just in a holding pattern until we hear more. But at this time, we're working very closely with the administration, and we're trying to come up with as many opportunities as possible to keep the city funded. I know right now, you're in the middle of having your master plan completed, it should be completed next couple of months. That's going to open up a lot of opportunities for you with the Michigan Department of Natural Resources. They have passport grants and recreation grants that unfortunately, a lot of communities do not qualify for unless you have an updated master plan, so that's been really keeping us, holding us back from being able to accomplish that. But I'm very excited, because once that is released, you're going to have a lot of opportunity for us to utilize that document to go after a lot of these opportunities, not just there, but federally too. They just want to see that you actually have a plan moving forward for how you're going to make, you know, utilize these grants and assure that the funding is spent appropriately. So, if there's no questions, that'll complete my report for this evening, and congratulations again on your grant. Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Lisa. Mary?
Good evening, Councilman Godbell, the entire council, to the mayor, to the clerk, and to all the dignitaries here and the fine citizens of Westland. I bring you greetings from the office of Wayne County Commissioner Glenn Anderson. I think most of you know that I am Mary McLendon. And I want you to know, the people in Westland love the parks, the Wayne County Parks, the park schedules will be out soon, and when they come out, we will make sure those schedules get here to Westland, so the citizens can take part of the activities at the Wayne County Parks. Also, I think most of you know that the state of the county address was last, was last month, okay? And I did see many of the council persons there, okay, showing their interest in Wayne County and how it affects what happens here in the city of Westland. And a lot of things were discussed, but one thing in particular that I think is very important to the citizens of Westland is to be mindful that the 2020 census is on its way, and that you're making sure that you're rounding up all your residents, knowing where they are, so that they can in fact be counted. As you are aware, that census, it drives the, the economy and everything's going to happen basically from the federal level in the city of Westland. So you want to make sure that all of your residents are accounted for. Additionally, I think many of you may be aware of the fact that at one of the Wayne County Commission meetings, there was discussion about videotaping the meetings, so that the residents can see those meetings online, as well as to see how the commissioner is voting on those items that come up. That was a discussion that did not go through, but I do want you to be aware of the fact that Commissioner Anderson is in support of you knowing what happens at the meetings, and that you will know how he voted. If you've been downtown recently, it's, it's pretty busy downtown. It's not the old downtown like it used to be. So we recognize the fact that it's not easy to come downtown, and of course, the commission meetings are during the middle of the day. So that makes it also activity that you almost cannot pursue, because you're doing what you do in the middle of the day. So I want you to know, he's in support of you knowing what's going on. And also, I have with me today some hazardous, household hazardous waste information, if anybody needs that. On Saturday, May the 11th, from 8:00 a.m. until 2:00 p.m., at the Henry Ford College, 5101 Evergreen Road, Dearborn, Michigan, just south of Ford Road, there will be hazardous waste collection. And of course, we all know you don't just put anything in the disposal here in the city of Westland. Certain things have to be hazardous collection, and that would be, example, household paints, floor wax, furniture polish, pharmaceutical waste, nail polish, glue, and all those things such as that are considered hazardous waste. So thank you, thank you for allowing me this opportunity to come to you. Thank you.
Thank you. Before we get started with the consent calendar and citizens' comments on the agenda, I would like to remind everyone that this is a business meeting of the city, and that we conduct the meetings of the city by Robert's Rules of Order and the policies and procedures of the Westland City Council. So we'll begin with citizens' questions or input on the agenda. Citizens will be recognized before the business of the meeting commences to address the council pertaining to items that are specifically on the business agenda. Citizens are asked to limit their questions or input to three minutes. Is there anyone on my left?
And Mr. President, I rise to a point of order.
Councilwoman Green, you're, you're out of order, but...
It's Robert's Rules of Order. If I call a point of order and stand up and make that declaration, I am to be given the floor.
You have the floor.
Thank you. I have called and requested a point of order, because I have documented that I would like my microphone turned on at the start of every meeting and turned off when the meeting adjourns. There is nothing in the rules, policy, and procedure, or Robert's Rules of Order that allows you to turn our microphones on and off. I have been to several city meetings just recently, the Westland Library, all of those microphones are left on. I have been to other municipalities, because you have used this microphone to retaliate against me, turn my speech off when I am speaking, in a manner that you, I have never witnessed you do to other councilmen. I requested in writing that you leave my microphone on, or that you provide me with documentation in the form of Robert's Rules of Order or policy and procedure that gives you the right to control this microphone. I am absolutely willing to abide by Robert's Rules of Order, but you're right to turn this microphone off on me, which you have done in the past, which this made my entire closing statement on occasion completely inaudible. You have done this to me on multiple occasions, so I am asking that you turn my microphone on and that you leave it on, unless you can refer to the rules and show me where it says that you have the right to control these microphones before technology was made, we built this city hall, you didn't, that, that box was not in place, and you all had meetings with no issue, and I would appreciate the same respect that you give yourself and the men that I serve with. Thank you.
Mr. Fasson.
Council President, with respect to Robert's Rules of Orders and the use of the point of order rule, it is appropriate, and it does interrupt any discussion that is then going on when the point of privilege or point of order is raised, but the point of order is for the purposes of identifying a rule that appears to be broken. If that rule is, appears to be broken, the speakers should speak to the specific rule. There's no debate, there's no reconsideration, and the decision is made by the chair as to whether or not a rule is, is broken, based on the Robert's Rules of Order, point of order issues.
Thank you, Mr. Fasson, and I will just make a comment that I made at the previous council meeting twice, that our system, in order to properly recognize council members when they wish to speak, is they push their button on their microphone, and it flashes an indication that the council member wishes, wishes to be recognized. We have followed this procedure since the inception of this system, since we moved to city hall. At the old city hall, there was a system of lights that lit up the same, in a, in a similar manner, that allowed the chair to know, and it wasn't just me, it allowed the chair to know, the order in which people wishes, wish to be recognized. I, in doing so, it applies to everyone equally, and I do not have the ability to maintain order at the meetings by leaving microphones on at all times without knowing who wants to be recognized in which order. We'll move on to the citizens' questions or input on the agenda. Is there anyone on my left? Anyone on my right? We'll close citizens' questions or input on the agenda and move on to the consent calendar. Is there a motion? Motion by Councilman Johnson, supported by councilmen...
(Inaudible)
You are out of order, there's a motion on the floor.
The point of order allows her to interrupt...
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
Whoever raises a point of orders to identify the rule that is, they believe is being violated, there's no debate, there's no reconsideration, the chair makes the rule.
Councilwoman Green, which, which rule is being violated?
Yes, I'm turning to the rule that is being violated. The policy does not speak to this, because it is not a policy. So actually, the rule or the law that is being violated is my civil rights. What you stated was, it gives you the opportunity to know who wants to speak. The reason why I have requested this is because you have used this to retaliate, publicly embarrass me, and treat me in a biased fashion. So you are actually violating my civil rights, and again, the fact that there is nothing in our policy or procedure or Robert's Rules of Order that says you, as the council president or anyone on this panel, has the right to turn these microphones off at their leisure, it, it, you, you, it does not give you the right. And had you not been acting in the manner that you have been since I've been on council, I never would have made this request. So for the record, I am stating, I have made my point clear, and you have not provided me with anything in documentation that gives you the right to continue as you are. So we will, this, this matter, I'll, I'll take additional action to make sure that my rights are not continuously violated by your action. Thank you.
Mr. Fasson.
I don't believe my microphone's on.
Oh, okay. Sorry, it flashed. Is there any discussion on the consent calendar? Is there any discussion? Any dissent? Any dissent? Hearing no dissent, motion carries unanimously.
Council has approved the following consent calendar items. Minutes of the regular meeting, held March 18, 2019. Minutes of the study session, held March 18, 2019. Request from Art Van Furniture, 8300 North Wayne Road, to erect two tents, 20 by 20 and 30 by 60, on their property from April 29, 2019, through May 16, 2019. Traffic control order 2019-01, install one right turn only, signed at the driveway of 35000 Ford Road, North Plan, Family Planning, for vehicles that are exiting the parking lot onto Christine Street. Traffic order number 2019-02, install one school zone, 25 mile per hour speed limit sign indicating Monday through Friday, 8:00 a.m. to 9:00 a.m., and 4:00 p.m. to 5:00 p.m., also indicating all year, on the north side of Ann Arbor Trail near Donna. And install one school zone, 25 mile per hour speed limit sign indicating Monday through Friday, 8:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m., and 4:00 p.m. to 5:00 p.m., also indicating all year, on the south side of Ann Arbor Trail near Liberty Street. Approval of swap vehicle repair. Administration recommended approval proposal from the Armour Group, the sole authorized repair vendor in the state of Michigan, in an amount of $8,480. Approval of bid for professional services relating to security camera and access system upgrades at the DPS Fleet Yard. Administration recommended the low bidder, Actron Security Alarm Systems Incorporated, amount not to exceed $43,634.55. Approval of intergovernmental agreement, agreement between the County of Wayne and the city of Westland to utilize Parks Millage funding from fiscal year 2018-2019, in the amount of $8,690 for walkway improvements at Stottlemyre Park. The mayor and city clerk are authorized to execute on behalf of the city. Adoption of ordinance 22083, in ordinance to adopt Chapter 26, Article 1, Sections 26 1 through 26 8 of the Westland City Code to regulate and license secondhand dealers and junk dealers, and to prescribe penalties for violations of these provisions. This item was introduced March 18, 2019. Last item on the consent calendar, adoption of prepared resolution authorizing the Westland Fire Department to establish and maintain a cadet program within the fire department comprised of individuals from 16 through 17 years of age. Moving to new business, item one. Approval, I'm sorry, adoption of prepared resolution honoring Mayor Gene McKinney for his service to the city of Westland and its residents by dedicating the grand ballroom inside Westland City Hall in his name, and is further resolved on this first day of April 2019, that this resolution would be accepted during this day's proceedings and to remain as a record of sincere appreciation and respect for Mayor Gene McKinney.
Motion by Councilman Londo, supported by Councilman Hersberg. Councilwoman Green.
Thank you, thank you. First of all, thank you, City Council, for adding this to tonight's agenda. The city is, is looking to honor the city of Westland's second mayor, Mayor Gene McKinney. He was born in 1935 in Nakin Township. He was elected as Westland's second mayor at the age of 33, and at that time, he was Michigan's youngest mayor. He served the city of Westland in the years 1969 to 1975. And then, just got just a couple other things to give you a flavor. Gene McKinney served as a member of the Nakin Township Charter Commission, which aimed at trans, or oversaw the transformation from a community as a township to a city. He worked alongside eight other individuals to write the city charter, and together their work helped lay the framework for the policies that are still used to manage the city of Westland today. Amongst some of his accomplishments, Mayor McKinney, working with other members of the community and government officials, oversaw the groundwork for bringing Westland's first place, or Westland's own post office here, establishing the historical commission, creating the housing commission, forming the Westland Library Board, which allowed for planning for our own library. He worked hard to add the name Westland, added to, to be added to the Wayne School District. He succeeded in the development of the Westland Golf Course. He was very instrumental in bringing the Michigan Humane Society to Westland. He launched a police cadet program for young residents interested in public safety, and he built a new, he worked with others to build a new police station and two fire stations. So obviously, Mayor McKinney has left his, his mark on the city. He still calls the city of Westland his home, so with this resolution, if it's adopted tonight, it'll be signed by the mayor and all seven council members and the city clerk to honor his, his service by naming the grand ballroom here at city hall in his honor. Mr. McKinney could not be here tonight, but he wishes everybody his best, and he's going to be watching on, on TV. Tonight, we're just going to ask you to pass the resolution, and if you do that, then we'll work with Mayor McKinney and his family to do a ceremony here at city hall when the weather gets a little bit better, where we can honor his service properly and figure out exactly how we're going to honor him at the, the grand ballroom. So, council, we appreciate your consideration in behalf of Mayor Gene McKinney. Thank you.
Thanks, Mayor. Is there any further discussion from the council? Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Green.
Yes.
Councilman Hammond.
Yes.
Councilman Hurd.
Yes.
Councilman Hersberg.
Yes.
Councilman Londo.
Yes.
President Godbell.
Yes.
The resolution passes unanimously. As we go to new business, item two, I'd like to remind the council, there are three nominations, three different agenda items today, and three different appointments today, and I only say that because it could be confusing. New business, item two, nomination of member to the Westland Zoning Board of Appeals for a three-year term, with the term to expire May 12, 2022. Benny McGow, Eileen DeHart Schuf, and Mary Valordita have submitted letters requesting consideration for reappointment.
Councilman Hammond.
Thank you, Council President, I move to nominate Benny McGow.
Is there any motion, and, yeah, is there any, Councilman Hersberg? Councilman Londo?
I'd like to nominate Eileen DeHart Schuf. Oh, I'm sorry.
where we can honor his service properly and figure out exactly how we're going to honor him at the grand ballroom. So, counsel, we appreciate your consideration in behalf of Mayor Gene McKinney. Thank you.
Thanks, Mayor. Is there any further discussion from the council? Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Green?
Yes.
Councilman Hammond?
Yes.
Councilman Hart?
Yes.
Councilman Hersberg?
Yes.
Councilman Johnson?
Yes.
Councilman Londo?
Yes.
President Godbout?
Yes.
The resolution passes unanimously. As we go to new business, item two, I'd like to remind the council there are three nominations, three different agenda items today, and three different appointments today. And I only say that because it could be confusing. New business, item two. Nomination of member to the Westland Zoning Board of Appeals for a three-year term with the term to expire May 12, 2022. Benny McGow, Eileen DeHart Schuf, and Mary Valordita have submitted letters requesting consideration for reappointment.
Councilman Hammond?
Thank you, Council President, I move to nominate Benny McGow.
Is there any motion and, yeah, is there any, Councilman Hersberg? Councilman Londo?
I'd like to nominate Eileen DeHart Schuf. Oh, I'm sorry.
One at a time.
Oh, that's what.
Okay. Council. Is there a motion to close nominations? Motion by Councilman Johnson, is there support? Support by Councilman Hersberg. Is there any discussion? Any discussion? Any dissent? Any dissent? Hearing no dissent, motion carries unanimously.
New business, item three. Appointment of member to the Westland Zoning Board of Appeals for a three-year term with the term to expire May 12, 2022. Benny McGow has been nominated.
Councilman? Motion by Councilman Hersberg, is there support? Support by Councilman Hammond. Councilwoman Green?
No, I don't have comments.
Is there any discussion? Any discussion? Any dissent? Any dissent? Hearing no dissent, motion carries unanimously. Congratulations. Would you like to stand and be recognized, Ben?
Thank you very much. Good evening. To the mayor and to the city council, I am very honored to have been renominated for a three-year term with the Zoning Board of Appeals. And before I go any further, the resolution that's read before me regarding Gene McKinney, well, that makes me feel proud. Mac and I both, Mac Mayfield and I, we got into some degree of city administration work under Mayor Gene McKinney. I served as a planning commissioner during his tenure as mayor, and we got to know Gene quite well. Gene, as you know, is a great man. He's done a lot for the city, as the mayor had indicated. And when I heard the resolution and you passed that resolution to your name of all room in his honor, that's very, very excellent. Thank you. So I accept the reappointment, and I will continue to serve on the Zoning Board of Appeals to the best of my ability, and I won't hesitate to be supportive in any kind of constructive action in which the city and this council and the mayor takes to continue making this city a great city. Thank you again for the reappointment.
Thanks, Ben.
New business, item four. Nomination of member to the Westland Zoning Board of Appeals for a three-year term with the term to expire May 12, 2022. Eileen DeHart Schuf and Mary Valordita have submitted letters requesting consideration for reappointment.
Councilman Londo?
Thank you, President Godbout, I'd like to nominate Eileen DeHart Schuf.
Nomination? Motion to close nomination in support? Is there any discussion? Any discussion? Any dissent? Any dissent? Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Green?
Abstain.
Councilman Hammond?
Yes.
Councilman Hart?
Yes.
Councilman Hersberg?
Yes.
Councilman Johnson? Councilman Londo?
Yes.
President Godbout?
Yes.
Motion passes. New business, item five. Appointment of member to the Westland Zoning Board of Appeals for a three-year term with the term to expire May 12, 2022. Eileen DeHart Schuf has been nominated.
Motion by Councilman Londo, is there support? Support by Councilman Hart. Is there any discussion? Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Green?
Abstain.
Councilman Hammond? Councilman Hart?
Yes.
Councilman Londo?
Yes.
I'm sorry, Councilman Hersberg?
Yes.
Councilman Johnson? I already got you, Councilman Londo. President Godbout?
Yes.
And the motion passes. New business, item six. Nomination of member to the Westland Zoning Board of Appeals for a three-year term with the term to expire June 6, 2022. Mary Valordita has submitted a letter requesting consideration for reappointment.
Councilman Hersberg?
I move to nominate Mary Valordita.
Sure. Motion to close nominations? Support? Councilwoman Green? Is there any discussion? Any discussion? Any dissent? Any dissent? Hearing no dissent, motion carries unanimously.
New business, item seven. Appointment of member to the Westland Zoning Board of Appeals for a three-year term with the term to expire June 6, 2022. Mary Valordita has been nominated.
Motion by Councilman Hersberg, supported by Councilman Londo. Is there any discussion? Any discussion? Any dissent? Any dissent? Hearing no dissent, motion carries unanimously. Mayor, would you like to stand and be recognized?
New business, item eight, approval of voucher.
Is there a motion? Motion by Councilman Londo, is there support? Support by Councilman Hammond. Is there, let's see, Councilman Johnson?
I do have a question, and I have to apologize to Steve. I usually try to get with him long ahead of council meetings, but I've been a little busy the last four or five days. On page 10, Steve, under the ice arena, it says, "City Event, Alexander the Great," $2,453.22. Can you tell me what that is?
Mr. Smith?
Yes, through the chair, that is for the Red Wing Alumni Event, the dinner after the event that took place.
One more question. Did that come out of general funds, or did it come out of that fund that was created for the event?
That, those were paid for from the proceeds from the event, so no cost to the city.
Thanks.
Councilman Hart?
Yes, through the chair, Steve Smith, page four of the vouchers under Personnel, Department 270. Can you please explain to me what the reimbursements were, or in conference reimbursement for James Godbout, and reimbursement for Tasha Green?
Mr. Smith?
Yes, through the chair. For, first with, for President Godbout, that was for the MML Conference that took place in Frankenmuth, and also, there was a registration fee for the MML Capitol Conference as well. For Councilwoman Green, that was for the annual legislative conference hosted by the Congressional Caucus. This conference took place in Washington, DC back in September of 2018.
Councilman Hart?
Yeah, to the chair. Is there any precedent for us sending people to DC before? I don't think we've ever sent anybody to DC.
I'm not aware of that occurring for, from a council perspective, maybe. And our city clerk's been around a lot longer than I have, but I don't recall that occurring. Maybe he was on, he was on the council previous to me, so.
I don't recall any such expenditure, but that's not to say it didn't happen. I just don't recall it. Okay. I would move to pull this request off of the voucher report and vote for or deny.
Councilwoman Green?
Yes, the reason for that expense is they didn't send me to DC. I went to the Congressional Black Caucus last year because I was denied the right to serve on a commission here in the city of Westland. As you know, and we discussed in January, when we were sworn in, I asked the council president and the mayor first, before any of you did, before you were placed on the Nakan Transit Commission, you acknowledged that. You acknowledged that you asked to be placed on the commission and was able to be, to serve. I was denied multiple occasions. I've discussed it here at the council meetings. Not once did any of you come to my defense. So what that is for was the hotel in the city of Washington, DC to not only educate myself as a new elected official, to train with those who have been doing politics for an extremely long period of time, and I was not able to serve here. I paid for my own airfare, I paid for my own food, I paid for all of my transportation, and the only thing that I asked for the city of Westland to reimburse me for was the hotel stay only. And that was only after I was treated in a biased manner that you have, yourself have not experienced. So I am in objection to having to go outside of the city of Westland to serve and to, 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 to serve on a commission, and because I go, went to an annual legislative conference that many of the people within the local southeast Michigan and even the metro Detroit area were present at that conference, so it wasn't, a lot of elected officials. I happen to be the only African American sitting on the city council in Westland, so I attended the annual Black Caucus in the city of Washington, DC, and I have asked for reimbursement for my hotel stay, and I believe that is more than fair, considering the fact that I wasn't allowed to serve here, like you and several other people have, have been able to do. So thank you, until recently.
Councilman Johnson, there's a motion currently, so if, is there, Councilman Hart made a motion to pull and deny that expenditure. Did you wish to speak to that?
Not to his motion, no. I just had a question for the city attorney on this issue.
Okay.
Through the chair to Mr. Fasson. Is that a legal expense that the city can pay? Because, as has been stated, I don't recall this ever happening either, but I don't want to get in, have a problem if we're paying for things that we legally can't pay for.
Through the chair, first, I'd point out, counsel, that once the motion's been made and seconded, all discussions shall be confined to the merits of the pending motion, and speakers shall address their remarks through the chair pursuant to your own policies and procedures, Section 14 Sub A. Since this touches on the, I believe, the pending motion, all I can say at this point is, I've not been asked this question before and don't have an answer to that question off the top of my head.
So there's, there's a motion on the floor, is there support for the motion on the floor?
I have another question, if I could.
Let's, let's get the, there's, there's a motion on the floor, is there support for the motion on the floor? There's a motion in support. Councilwoman Green?
Yes, the mayor goes to DC, you have been to DC, or the mayor has been to DC, Vegas. Many people within his administration has, have, went to legislative forums for the purpose of what we are told as education, and I was denied the right to sit on a commission in the city of Westland. So you, you, you have a conference on there, which is for education as well. So I didn't even ask for airfare, which we pay air, we pay, for everybody else, we pay. If there's airfare required, we pay their airfare, we pay their food, and if you all deny this for me, you have created, you have created a precedent here in the city of Westland, and should you approve any expense related to any legislative conference for any reason, you will then discriminate against me, and I will be watching the number, I will be watching the checks, I will be watching everything from here on now. There has not been one question you got a check last month, Godbout, for like $1,200, more than $1,000, because I asked Steve about it. Nobody questioned that, and now you got another one on here for almost $900, and you all go all over the country. But because I asked for hotel reimbursement, and I didn't even ask for anything else, you, if, if you pass it, and anybody else goes anywhere and gets reimbursed, we're going to be in court.
Councilman Hammond?
Because I have just as much right as you all.
Councilman Hammond?
Thank you, Council President, two questions. First, through the chair to Mr. Smith. I do know the answer to this, but I'm going to ask it. In the budget, there is money in there for conferences and seminars, is that correct?
Through the chair, that is correct.
Okay. And then, through the chair to Councilwoman Green. Councilwoman, do you feel that this conference that you attended was for an educational purpose, to further your education for your council position and to further help the, the city?
Can you turn my microphone on, please?
Thank you. Yes, I do, and I sent Steve all the information in terms of what it was. This was not a pleasure trip. This was a legislative conference.
Thank you, Mr. Smith, and Councilwoman Green. I'm going to support the voucher in the current state to move forward with the approval of the expenditure. That's it for me. Thank you.
Is there any further discussion from the council? Councilman Hart?
Thank you. With regards to education, I'm a strong advocate for education. We have lots of educational opportunities as council members here with the Michigan Municipal League, as well as the Southeast Michigan Council of Governments, which Tasha Green is also our delegate for that organization. These are great learning events, and I myself have gone to two MML training events. These are nonpartisan, specifically here in Michigan. They're geared towards local legislators right here in our community. We, as a council, have always been able to go to these events, and even new council members were encouraged to go to Local Officers Training Academy. Basically, it's just an opportunity for new legislators, newly elected legislators, to have educational opportunity. The MML continues that to this day, and we've always been encouraged to do that. With regards to Mr. Godbout, he is also, has a special responsibility for the MML as we have chosen by the council for him to represent the city of Westland at these events. He shows up, he not only goes to training, but he also votes on issues on our behalf in the city. So that's what he attends. I'm happy that Councilwoman Green went to this event. I think it's fantastic. I think we should always be able to use our council stipends for those kinds of events to go ahead and further our education when it doesn't apply to the MML or SEMCOG or something we, as a council, even had an opportunity to discuss before we spend the money. I think it's rather presumptuous, it's a very slippery slope, and it sets the wrong precedent. If we all just decide now that we can go to any, any event that we choose, as long as we individually determine that it's valuable, and then make you, the taxpayers, pay for it, there's a very slippery slope. I could go to the council conference or the congressional conference on 5G with all of my experience, there is one. There's about 200 different congressional caucuses that are out there. There's a Veterans Party Caucus that I could go to and represent with all my time in the military, I'd be a valuable voice there. The Connected Cities Conference, there's even a SOTA Conference. My councilman Michael Londo would be very good to attend that. The point is this. We don't have the ability for us to just, all seven of us decide to go to trainings whenever we want and turn around for our little trip and hand the bill to you. I think that's irresponsible, it's unethical, and it's inappropriate. And that's why I'm voting no.
Councilman Londo?
Thank you, Council President. I would just ask, through the chair, two questions. One, was there a request made by Councilwoman Green ahead of time stating that she wished to go to this conference? And then, two, through the chair to administration or legal, is there a time limit on, I think I overheard it was September's when this conference was? Is there a time limit on how long you can get a reimbursement? Thanks.
Mr. Smith?
Yes, through the chair, there was no prior request for reimbursement up until I received it two, three weeks ago, I think it was. And no, there is no time limit that I'm aware of for reimbursement.
Councilman Johnson?
Thank you. I've, I've asked a question, and the answer that I think I've gotten is there's nothing that prohibits us from paying for these fees, and there is nothing in writing. I would like to see us implement something that any conferences outside of city business be requested and approved prior to attending going forward, but I don't think there's anything to prohibit us from paying for her rooms because there's nothing anywhere that says we can't. Thank you.
Is there any, is there any further discussion on the motion? Councilman?
Just to reiterate what I said earlier, I haven't been asked this question until a few minutes ago, and haven't reviewed any of the policies, procedures, ordinance procurement issues, so I can't give you an opinion relative to that.
Councilman Londo?
Thanks.
Councilwoman Green?
The reason why I went to this conference is because you all know, you know that I was denied the right to serve here in the city of Westland, and you would handle this as if I'm trying to sweep this under the rug when I couldn't serve, not on multiple committees. serve, I, not on multiple committees. I was even blocked from a Westland meeting by the mayor's executive and kept, and, and had, they had the contractor lied so I couldn't even show up as an attendee. You all know that. So for you to sit here and say, well, with anybody, and when it's, it's on, uh, you know, to take the taxpayers' money. I, I literally begged to serve here in Westland and you were given the seat before, and when I asked first, did you speak on the, the, the um, the, the, uh, how unfair it is with me being sworn in the same day you were? That you were placed after me and I asked first? Did you ever speak up when bored after commission after commission I was denied? For over a year? The mayor just appointed me or helped me get, uh, he, he withdrew himself so I could apply with SEMCOG. What, uh, two weeks ago? And you said it like I've been serving this entire time? I am completely, thank you for showing me how you really feel. I'll just say that. I, if I could have served here in the city of Westland, I would have. What happened with me was actually illegal because you all were given the right to serve and I wasn't. So I had to go outside of the city to educate myself as a new legislator. And I did not ask for airfare, I did not ask for food, I did not ask for transportation, I asked for hotel only. And I will say it again. You all have been traveling all over the country for years. And if you deny my request and anybody else's checks get cut, cause see, you only gonna discriminate against me for so long. If you cut a check for another elected official, it is discriminatory. And, and, and they all go outside of Michigan. So if we wanna play that game, then let's do it. But I will not be continuously disrespected and treated in a biased fashion. Thank you.
Councilman Londo?
Thanks, President Godbout. I just wanna state for the record, I'm not looking to discriminate against any, discriminate against anyone. Councilwoman Green wants to mention being on a board and commission. I believe at that same time, I was at a city center steering committee meeting that her and I were supposed to serve on and she was in DC. So she was on a board and commission with me. She wasn't at the meeting and I don't know why she wasn't at the meeting until I saw it on Facebook that was, she was in DC. I agree with Councilman Johnson, there's not, you know, there's nothing in the policy right now to state, uh, maybe we need to move forward and put something in there down the road, but it, it really does set a bad precedent if we, if we do it without permission. That's, that's my only argument is there was no, I wouldn't call it permission, I apologize for that. A written request to go is all I was asking for. So, thanks.
Councilwoman Green?
Yes. I will state that when permission is granted without people having to ask, then it, it is different from what I have experienced. I have literally begged to sit on a commission. Many of the commissions that you all sat on, I asked to sit on them and were denied that. And you know it, you sit in those study session meetings, you are here with me and council and you watching and you don't say a word, ever have you ever, any of you, ever spoke up on my behalf? So when you say, well, if we ask permission, what else am I supposed to do? I've been begging all year. I'm not gonna be treated different. I am not beneath you all. I was elected just like you are and I'm gonna continue to do my job. And if you afford the opportunity for education outside of the state of Michigan for one elected official, that applies to all of us. You don't have to ask permission. I have been put in a position to literally beg and I'm not gonna do it anymore. And until you start speaking up for my rights, what you see happening with me, I don't wanna hear about uh, the permission that you never had to ask for, but I'm begging for it. So if, if, if you deny one elected official being me, you better be prepared to deny everybody for the remainder of my four-year term or we'll be in court. Thank you.
Councilman Londo?
Thanks, President Godbout. Again, just wanna clear the record up. I have never once went out of state for city business. I've never once been reimbursed to go out of state for city business. I can only speak for myself, I can't speak for my colleagues. Um, I have attended the Michigan Municipal League Weekender Event along with Councilwoman Green, along with Councilman Hart, along with Council President Proton Peter Hersberg last year. We all submitted reimbursements. The only person that got questioned was this guy right here. Not one of these other people were questioned about it. One person, me. So where, where, who was defending me when that was being done? Um, and the only other events I've ever been to is SEMCOG events, which again, Councilwoman Green has gone to, Councilman Hart's been to those. Um, that's it. I, so I'll state for the record, again, I have never attended any conferences outside of the state of Michigan and reimbursed the city. Only reimbursement I've ever gotten was for one MML conference event and that was, I don't have the exact figure in front of me, around 200 bucks. Thank you.
Councilwoman Green?
I just wanna state for the record, Mike Londo being questioned did not occur with anybody within the city. It was by a resident who came to the microphone and just asked what, what occurred. So I don't want there to be a misconception that the city or any of these gentlemen asked him about that. They did not. There, this is happening with my, cause I've never seen this happen with anyone else. But we will handle it accordingly. Uh, you, you're not gonna treat me different and you will create a precedent tonight and that will be the policy going forward. I am not going to continue to allow it. So we can handle this however you all. I would have never had to go to DC if I wasn't treated like a dog here in Westland. So I'm going to continue to stand up for myself and um, SEMCOG meetings are all free. You walk into the SEMCOG building downtown Detroit, those are not paid meetings. The only time we had to go, uh, give reimburse is when we went to Frankenmuth for a two-day education. And I asked the mayor to send us to, for, for training. So there, the, the layers, it's layers and layers and layers and layers to this. Um, you will not treat me different. And if you deny this, you have every right to, but just know, I'm an elected official just like you all and you are not over me and you are not in a higher position than me and you will not be treated in a different manner. So I don't, if anybody goes outside of the state of Michigan, including the mayor or any of his staff and you approve it, you have created, you have discriminator, discriminated against me and that's how it will be handled. You're not gonna, you're not gonna get away with it. Thank you.
Councilman Hart?
Thank you. Again, I drive to the point that there is a little bit of ethics and there's a little bit of responsibility. You can't just decide that I'm gonna go on a training on my own and expect somebody to pay for it. That's what I'm saying. If we would have talked about it beforehand, we would have supported it. So if next week I wanna go to these conferences outside of this, uh, outside of the state, that's the precedent we're setting. If we just go ahead and approve this, it's saying that I can go, all of my colleagues can go wherever they want, that they personally feel is valuable and put the bill on the city. I do go to conferences that I don't charge for. I use my personal money. I use my campaign finance when it's appropriate, cause that's what that campaign finance account is for, so that I can use those funds for that reason. If Councilwoman Green would have even said that she wanted to go and she needed to help, I would have wrote a check to help her go. So, but the whole piece that's missing is this. You can't just, as an individual with no checks and balances, go to a training that you feel is appropriate and put the bill in the lap of the taxpayer. It's inappropriate. It's unethical. Just like when I was in corporate America. I don't go and decide to take a trip, a corporate trip and tell my boss, oh, by the way, I got back, here's my expense report, it was cool. I have to go ahead and do an appropriation. I have to submit my proposed budget and what I plan to do there and it gets approved. This, the city, the administration of the city and us as fiduciaries should be no different than that. I'm going to go to this conference, let's talk about it. What's the value? Sure, I'd love to send ya. But just to go there, do it on your own, come back and hand the bill to you guys is inappropriate. And in nowhere in the world is that okay? But except apparently today. So that's it.
Councilwoman Green?
I just wanted to speak to Councilman Hart's statement when he said we should have talked about it. At what point were you planning to talk about me being denied to sit on a commission? What, what point were you gonna jump in and talk about that? When, when you say as if I just decided to go to Disney World when you all knew I couldn't sit on a commission? Even some of the other councilmen questioned why you got to sit on the Nankin Transit Commission. Uh, you, you're out of order, I have the floor. Some of the other councilmen questioned why you were placed on the Nankin Transit Commission when that wasn't opened up to all of us. And I asked first. I wasn't the only one who's, who mentioned, why did you get placed? And then Londo and, you know, it, it's not, it wasn't fair. So for, I don't, you haven't stepped up and said anything about what you've seen all year. So for me to go and educate myself in a way that I was denied here in the city, I didn't expect to have a conversation with you because you've never initiated one in light of the fact that you've sat here and watched the, for over a year. But as long as you and, and some of the other ones are treated in a manner that allows you to better serve the community as a newly elected official, that's okay. But me being repeatedly denied and then going to a legislative conference, that was uh, you, below the belt. Uh, so again, we can go back and forth on this all night, it's all a matter of opinion. I will state for the record, if it's denied, you have created a precedent for all uh, elected official educational and legislative training throughout this country. If, if anybody goes, anybody at City Hall goes and it gets approved, we going to court. You're not gonna get away with it. So, and Jim, unless you're gonna speak up for everything that's not right, then don't speak as if I would do anything unethical because it wasn't unethical. I didn't have the opportunity that you have been given here in the city of Westland. And you know I just got placed on SEMCOG two weeks ago. So again, we can go round and round and round. I will respect whatever the vote is, but if a check gets cut and dispersed from, out of, from any elected official getting education and training, uh, political education and training, you have just discriminated against me. Thank you.
Mr. Fasson?
Nothing further.
Councilman Londo? I would, uh, there's, there's currently a motion on the floor and support. I would like to, in light of the fact that I just received a, a copy of the, there is a city travel policy uh, that's been in effect and since 1976 and the revision date is in July of 2001 uh, in regards to um, the policy, from a city travel policy. Uh, it doesn't specifically address council expenditures, but it does say the mayor must approve all conference, school and training programs prior to attendance and before they are submitted to the finance department for processing. The mayor from time to time may alter this policy. That being said, and since I know the city attorney hasn't had an opportunity to, to look at some of, some of this information, I would, uh, I would like to, to have a motion to, to pull and, and table this item until such time that we have the proper uh, opinions granted from the, the city attorney's office in regards to this travel policy. Council, there's a motion to, to postpone or to table and supported by Councilman Londo. Councilman Johnson?
Uh, yes, I think the original motion was to remove and deny, that goes away at this point and we're gonna table this till the next meeting?
Uh, till it gets brought off the table from council. So we can either, I mean, the motion is to table, which means there would be a motion at the next meeting if so, to remove it from the table and, and vote on it at that point in time.
Is, and, and I'm, I'm okay with that as long as we have the information we need by the next meeting.
Well, that's why the motion to table is, gives enough time so that until we get a, an opinion back that...
So we will not be acting in either way on this tonight?
Correct.
Thank you.
If...
There's a motion to table on the floor.
Correct.
That overrides the motion to pull this item off the voucher. So if, if the motion to table occurs and this item's not on the vouchers but not approved, it's neither denied nor approved.
Correct.
But you have to vote on the motion to table before you get to the position that Mr. Johnson just stated.
Right. Councilwoman Green?
Yes, I'd like to state that that policy you read is for employees, the people who report to the mayor. We're elected officials. So as you open, that had, that has nothing to do with council. And if you are going to pull mine for discussion, then I, I would like you to see you pull yours as well.
There's, there's, is there further discussion on the motion to table? Further discussion on the motion to table? Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Green?
No.
Councilman Hammons? Councilman Hart? Councilman Hersberg?
Yes.
Councilman Johnson? Councilman Londo?
Yes.
President Godbout?
Yes.
Motion to table passes. Going back to, we now revert back to the original question to approve the voucher.
There was, there was motion and support on that motion. So is there any further discussion on the vouchers? Councilwoman Green?
Yes, I make a motion that the um, voucher for Council President Godbout be also pulled for the discussion that we're going to have regarding travel so that we all, since the, if the effort is to get on the same page, I think that's only fair since two of us have travel invoices um, that have been submitted and none of us, uh, I'll just leave it at that. I think that, that is appropriate since we're going to discuss travel and he has an invoice of almost $900 and he just had one approved of almost, over 1,000 last month and there's been several others. Uh, so I make a motion that uh, all travel invoices that are currently in the voucher be pulled for this discussion that we're getting ready to have. Thank you.
There's a motion, is, is there support? And before we get to the support for the motion, I just would have asked, since her motion...
That's not, that's not Robert's rules of order. You have to call...
Fine, is there support for the motion? Support by Councilman Hart. I'll open it up for discussion. Is there any discussion? Mr. Fasson?
Point of clarification, is the motion to table all travel vouchers for council?
It is on. It was on.
I wrote, I wrote the motion.
Through the chair to the, are you, were you asking me what my motion was for?
No, the clerk, the clerk takes down the motion. I'm just asking for a point of clarification so that...
Motion as made by Councilwoman Hart, supported by, I'm, I'm sorry. Yes, thank you. Councilwoman Green, supported by Councilman Hart, was to remove all travel vouchers from this approval or from this voucher. That's what it said.
This current packet.
All travel vouchers. I have no idea.
Councilman Hart?
A point of clarification, there might be some travel vouchers on this thing that are applied to some of the members of the administration and those individuals would be impacted too. That, this, this motion should apply just to Tasha Green and to James Godbout. If it's the entire voucher report, it's gonna impact an awful lot more people who already had approved vouchers and approved travel prearranged. So it's only applied to the two members of council.
Councilman Johnson?
I, I believe the motion was all, uh, nobody's gonna be harmed if we pull these tonight, even if it's administration or not. Um, and, and I believe the, the motion was clear, all travel vouchers. But nobody's gonna be harmed, Jim, if, if we take them all off and deal with them next two weeks from now. Nobody, cause they've already gone, the trips have been made.
Is there further discussion from the council?
Yeah.
Councilman Hart?
I heard you said, Councilman Johnson, just wanna ensure, through the chair to Steve Smith, is, do any of our employees run the risk of not being reimbursed? If, if we pull this off for, I mean, a table, this could be two weeks, could be four. Is, is there a risk that they will not be reimbursed?
Through the chair, there is one other travel reimbursement voucher on, that I'm aware of on tonight's voucher list, so...
So if they would not be reimbursed then?
If that one, yeah, if, if all travel was pulled, then that one would be too, so...
Okay, thank you.
Councilman Londo?
Uh, just a question, I was just looking at the motion one more time. So this is a motion to remove or is this a motion to table? If we remove, neither of these, um, neither of my colleagues will be reimbursed.
To remove?
To remove, to the city attorney, or, sorry. That's what I'm asking, so, to table gives us a chance to bring it back and discuss it, I believe. That's what I'm asking, so, just making sure everyone's okay with that.
Councilman Johnson?
Yeah, for clarification, if they were removed, they can be added to the next set of vouchers two weeks from now, correct?
Yes, I believe that's correct. Mr. Smith?
Through the chair, yes, that's correct.
So, I think, again, there's some confusion as to what the actual motion was and is. There is a difference between removing them and tabling them, which I believe was the original motion to table all the travel vouchers, as compared to removing them, a motion to remove them, so that they automatically cycle back in two weeks. So, again, the clerk has the motion, I just want to make sure that the motion comports with the maker, which is Councilwoman Green, and the seconder, which is Councilman Hart.
And when we watch the tape, we'll hear "remove."
And, and...
Yes.
Councilman Johnson?
He's already spoken, and my light has been off. My light is off.
Councilwoman Green?
If I would have had the opportunity to explain the motion since I asked, I'm the one who asked for it, what I said was, Councilman, excuse me, Councilman Godbout has a travel voucher as well. So, I asked for it to be pulled for this discussion that we're going to have. I did not ask for, I was not intending a motion to pull everybody's voucher off, although I think it's fair, because you all are trying to come up with rules that are not even in writing, and the things that I have put before you to even ask you to review, in terms to clarify the rules, you won't do that. But you want to come up with some special rules, so pull everybody's. But what I said was, President Godbout is asking for reimbursement as well, the same as me, so it is not fair to approve his voucher reimbursement request and pull mine for a discussion. I have not violated any rule. So, if you're going to pull mine, pull his, and then let's have a discussion.
That, just a point of order, I believe that may have been your intent, but that was not what your motion stated, as per the city clerk, correct?
Yes.
No, I know what I said.
And a motion and support can be withdrawn, I mean, if that's anyone's interest, but that's what was stated.
Well, I withdraw that motion and revise my motion to, which I believe I said, because I specifically stated his name when I made the request, that is not fair to, and said, I said, since we're having this discussion, then pull his too. But I will reiterate or revise what I said. I make a motion that, since there's two of us who are asking for travel reimbursement, I believe it is appropriate and just to table both of our invoices for this discussion.
Motion by Councilwoman Green, supported by Councilman Londo. Councilman Johnson?
I have to ask, I heard there were tabled that time, do you want them removed from this set of vouchers, or do you want it tabled? Big difference.
What does, either way, it's not being paid. So, what does that, what is the difference that you're...
I just want clarification, if it's taken off, it comes back up in two weeks. If it's tabled, correct me if I'm wrong, three council members have to put it back on.
Okay, well, I make a motion to remove it, meaning it can come back up in two weeks after, whenever we have this discussion that we're allegedly, apparently going to have.
I will support that. We have to withdraw this last one, right?
Let's, there's a motion to pull two items, to remove two items from the vouchers for further consideration. There's a motion and support to pull those two items from the vouchers. Is there any?
Is that what we're going with?
Yes.
Hers is already tabled.
No, we never voted on the motion to table. Give the clerk a moment to catch up.
And then I'd like to read it back.
Sure.
The way that I understand it. And if I may, Mr. President, just to kind of catch us up to where I think we're at, there was a motion and support to approve the voucher. There was an item with motion and support to table one payment to Councilwoman Green. There was then two items that were moved and supported and withdrawn, and we are now at an item that has been moved by Councilwoman Green, supported by Councilman Londo, to remove both the, Councilwoman Green-
Johnson was the speaker there.
Thank you. To remove both the Councilwoman Green and Council President Godbout invoices from this voucher. To remove those invoices from this voucher, that's the way I understood it.
Is that correct, Councilwoman Green?
Yes, to remove mine and yours.
Okay.
And if there's any that exists for any other council person, so that we're all treated the same.
Motion and support. Is there any further discussion? Any further discussion? Any dissent?
Dissent.
Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Green?
Yes.
Councilman Hammond?
Yes.
Councilman Hart?
Yes.
Councilman Hirschberg?
No.
Councilman Johnson?
Yes.
Councilman Londo?
Yes.
President Godbout?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Now, we revert back to the original.
Back to the original motion, correct. On the approval of the voucher, it's been moved and supported. Roll call?
Is there further discussion on the vouchers? Any further discussion on the vouchers? Any dissent? Any dissent? Hearing no dissent, motion carries unanimously. We'll move on to citizens' comments or requests. Citizens will be recognized at the end of the meeting immediately following the agenda item approval of vouchers. Citizens are asked to limit their comments to three minutes. All citizens wishing to speak will be heard. Everyone speaking before the council should do so in a civil manner. Speakers shall refrain from abusive or profane remarks, vulgar language, disruptive outbursts, threats, racial slurs, or other conduct that interferes with the orderly conduct of the business meeting. Personal attacks on council members, the administration, city staff, other speakers, or member of the public will not be tolerated. Is there anyone on my left? Anyone on my right? This man.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, citizens of Westland. I'm Gina Wilson Stewart. I'm the president of the Westland County NAACP. Hope you guys are doing well. I just wanted to let you know that the citizens of Westlands are invited to an expungement fair that we're having. It's going to be on May 4th, and it's going to be held in the city of Inkster from 10:00 to 2:00, 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM. An expungement is to get things off your record. Say, if you have two misdemeanors or one felony, you can bring in your paperwork, and we will have attorneys on site so that you can meet with them, find out if you can get those taken off your record, so that, say, when you apply for a job, it won't be there. So, the event is going to be held at the American International Academy School at 27100 Avondale, and that's in the city of Inkster. And we have a lot of partners, so what we're trying to do is get the word out, we know that people who have a misdemeanor or felony, sometimes they can't get a job, and if they only have one felony, they can get it off, and then they don't have to check the box. So, it's definitely to help them out with their financial situation, and it proves our criminal outreach, criminal justice outreach. So, we're inviting all the residents of Westland in their situation to come to the expungement fair. And I'll email it out, so you guys will have it.
Great, thank you. And one on my left? Yes.
Good evening, Council President, Mayor's Office. One quick question to Councilman Londo, to the chair, if you can. Mr. Londo, did you say that Councilwoman Tasha Green was appointed to a commission and didn't show up to that commission? If so, what commission, and when was this? Thank you.
Councilman Londo?
Thank you, President Godbout, I'll just, I don't know if it was an actual commission, I think it was a committee, a steering committee. It was the city, city center district steering committee. We had one for the DDA board, for the Ford Road Vision, and then we had one for the Westland Mall area, so, I wouldn't say it was, it was a committee.
Is there anyone on my right? Anyone on my left? We'll close citizens' comments and move on to comments from the administration. Mayor?
Thank you, and good evening, everyone. City Council, thank you for moving forward tonight with the recognition for former Mayor Gene McKinney. Certainly look forward to inviting everybody to the future ceremony when we officially recognize him. Council, there was a lot of talk about travel tonight, and what we'll do is, we'll forward the administrative travel policy to city council as you deliberate through this. And I think that sometimes, when we find we don't have a good policy to cover things, it makes things more difficult, so maybe this is an opportunity to create some policy there, which will help us in the future. Then the last thing I have is, I just want to let the, or let the citizens know that today's April 1st, and this is the day that the mayor is required by the Westland City Charter to present Westland City Council with the balanced budget, and we did that earlier this evening, we presented a $68 million balanced budget. It adds about $334,000 to our general fund balance, and that fund balance, which is something we try to keep around 10%, is at 6.7 million, so that gives us about 10% of our annual expenses in our rainy day fund. So, we're going to be deliberating the budget, starting this Saturday. The council president will probably talk a little bit about the dates of those study sessions, but for the residents, my proposed budget will be available on the cityofwestland.com tomorrow morning. You can find it under the opengov portal on the website, or if you need a hard copy, my office can certainly help you with that. So, with that, council, we look forward to working together with you to come up with a balanced budget to lead the city forward in this upcoming budget year. Thank you.
Anything from the city attorney's office?
Thank you, just a couple of things, I think it hopefully will aid in, or certainly being offered in the interest of civility here at council. Your council policies do cover many of the items that we run into on a regular basis, and one of them happened this evening, again, that I'd point out, that your policy does encourage citizens who are commenting during citizens' comment period to provide their name and their city. They're not required to, but it does help provide some information, and as I said, your policy addresses that. I would also point out that in Section 14A, relative to motions, I mentioned earlier that once the motion and the second is occurred, the discussion should be confined to the merits of the pending motion, and I think that will also aid a little bit in keeping things moving. It also provides in your policy that speakers shall address their remarks through the chair, and again, cut down on some of the back and forth between individuals may aid in civility here. And finally, we had a couple of abstentions today, and your policies under Section 15 provide that if a council member intends to abstain from the vote, the council member shall state for the record their intention to abstain and the reason for doing so. So, again, I think it's, it'll probably be useful for council, for everybody to review their policies. Again, they may find some additional policies they need, but they would also, I think, if everybody abided by the policies, it may run a little smoother. And this, the most recent policy and procedures were revised just about a year ago, May 7th of 2018, and the subcommittee that worked on that was President Pro Tem Peter Hirschberg, Councilman Michael Londo, and Councilwoman Tasha Green. So, this is, the current set of policies are really the policies of the currently sitting city council, so I just wanted to bring that to everybody's attention. Thank you.
Thanks. We'll begin council comments with Councilman Johnson.
Thank you. Ms. Norserini had to leave, obviously, I just want to thank her, and I'll call her tomorrow, for coming and giving us the updates to those grants, she committed to doing that. We had some discussion, and she asked if me, if I meant that she should come every 30 days, and I told her no, only when she had some announcements to make. So, I appreciate her coming back tonight. I want to congratulate Benny, Eileen, and Mary for their appointment, and thank you for correcting me, Mr. Fasson. I abstained because I'm related to Eileen, and I didn't think it would be right for me to vote for her to be on there, so that's why I abstained. Something that maybe we need to look at, and I was with the UAW for longer than I'd like to admit, and Ford Motor Company too, they, both of those big giant corporations had a policy that all travel had to be approved in advance. Maybe that's something we ought to look at, and then we wouldn't be going down these roads. If it's approved in advance, you can argue about it, and if it's approved, it's over and done with. But I just think approving all travel, council, administration, anybody else, should be done in advance. Thank you.
Councilman Londo?
Thanks, President Godbout. I'll start off tonight, I just want to apologize to my colleagues for my emotions, I didn't mean that my colleagues called me out on that travel, or, yeah, travel expense, it was a resident, so I apologize to my colleagues. I also want to thank Gina from the NAACP, it's here, I'm actually wearing my pin tonight, go figure, you're here, and I have your membership form that I've been meeting to send back in, so please see me after the meeting, please. Also, congratulations to Benny McGowan, Eileen DeHart Schoff, and Mary Velladeta for your reapportments to the Zoning Board of Appeals. As always, we appreciate your willingness to serve, and looking forward to continuing our working relationship. I want to thank the police department for adding the traffic control, school zone, speed limit signs along Ann Arbor Trail near Hayes Elementary, and I'd like to also thank the crossing guard who brought that to our attention, to the council and the administration for bringing that safety concern forward. Safety of our children is obviously of the utmost importance to all of us up here, and I thought it was a no-brainer, in my opinion. Also want to talk about a few more agenda items, I appreciate the fire department bringing forward the cadet program. I think that'll be a great feeder program, much like our police explorer program, and give these young men and women an opportunity to get hands-on experience with our fire department, and see if that's a career they'd like to go down. Also like to thank the administration for honoring Mayor Gene McKinney, as the mayor stated earlier, when he was first elected, he was Westland's second mayor at the age of 33. He was the youngest mayor in the state of Michigan, and the resolution we passed tonight has many highlights and accomplishments that he had during his tenure, and I want to thank him for his service and his continued service to our community. Also want to thank the residents that are continuing to use our recycling center, while the administration continues to pursue other options for curbside recycling. I've been there at least once a week, and it seems like there's always a line of cars when I'm there. But I did want to mention one thing that we mentioned in our coffee hour the other day, plastic bags are not recyclable. I saw some ladies throwing their recyclables into the recycle dumpster or compactor with the plastic bag, so if you could just not put the plastic bags in there, but put your recyclables in there, we'd really appreciate it. The plastic bags jam up the machines at the recycling center. Speaking of our coffee hour, it was a huge success, I want to thank resident Richard Thomas from Ashford Court, we had a great discussion about recycling of all things, our roads and infrastructure, senior services, and the future vision of the city of Westland, what we see for our mall area, what we see for the former Ford Road site where City Hall was. We'll announce our next coffee hour at the next, probably at the next council meeting. I know our new library director's invited us to host one at the library, so we'll probably take advantage of that. A couple more things, signups have begun for WIAA baseball, so for anyone interested, you can simply go to thewiaa.com for more details. And then, this weekend, I actually had a chance to attend the grand opening of the Westland Mini Mall, kind of a unique, neat little location, it's at 920 South Wayne Road. It's open to shoppers on the weekends, they had their grand opening, and I think it's a really cool concept, and I talked to Shelley for a little bit, I actually did a Facebook Live and threw it on my Facebook page, if you want to check that out. She's got available space for all new small businesses- She's got available space for all new small businesses on a weekend basis or a monthly basis, and exclusively items that are new or craft service are welcome. They don't want any used or antique items, and obviously no weapons or X-rated merchandise. If you want more information, you can go to westlandminimall.com. Also check around on Facebook and stop in and see them. The contract information's on their website, you can get all the information. And then last couple things. Westland resident Eric O'Stryke, he's actually a friend of mine, he's deaf. He was a runner-up at the Midwest Deaf Poker Championship this past weekend in Toledo, Ohio. He outlasted nearly 100 other competitors that were also deaf. So congratulations on his strong finish. I think he brought home about $1,000, so that's pretty neat. And then lastly, I'm looking forward to our budget sessions, our extended budget sessions. I appreciate the mayor's officer for having a study session tonight. I'm excited to see how we can expand and improve our city services in the future. That's it. Thanks.
Councilwoman Green?
I'd like to start tonight by thanking Amore and Dustin for leading the Pledge of Allegiance. I would also like to inform those who may not be aware that the Friends of the Library is having another book sale that is coming up on May the 2nd. There's going to be a preview sale for members only from 3:00 to 6:00 p.m. on that Thursday, and then it's open to the general public on Friday and Saturday on March 3rd and 4th from 10 a.m. to 4 p.m. And on that Sunday is Bag Day from 12:00 to 3:00, and that'll be a cost of $4 for the bag. So that is the Friends of the Library book sale coming up. Credit cards are accepted, and all proceeds go to the Westland Public Library. Just in reference to the travel discussion that council is going to be having, I look forward to there being one policy that applies to all of us. As many of you know who even watch these meetings or come to the meeting, there has been a repetitive difference in how I have been treated, actions being directed towards me that are not policy, this being one of them. And so I look forward to there being a policy in writing that applies to all of us and that is enforced across the board to avoid anything that would appear to be biased. And I would like to state that in reference to the policy, I have recently requested to sit down with some of the council members to discuss the policy, to revise some of them that are unclear. And I have not yet gotten confirmation to do that, but it takes three of us to sit down and go through the policy. And then we request that all council people sit down and review it together for the possibility of a change. As you can see, the rules are so foggy in a lot of instances that they need to be refined so that they are fair for everyone. So I will again be making that request, and I look forward to sitting down with some of my colleagues very soon to refine or to propose changes to make this process a lot I'd like to inform the public, those of you that are on social media or watch the news regularly are probably aware, the facility that the city recommended we take our recycling trash to about a month or so ago, or a couple months ago, Detroit Renewable Energy, was shut down without notice and immediately shut down by the state of Michigan. It was supported by Mayor Duggan. There was conversation during our debates here that the community was told, per the recommendation, that this was a state-of-the-art facility, and there were no issues, no odors that were noticeable. This particular facility had almost 1,000 DEQ violations. There was a severe health and safety issues ongoing at that particular location. So I just wanted to let the community know that although, and I actually am glad that council did vote to reject that recommendation, I believe it was on February the 19th, that the facility is no longer recycling or burning trash for anyone because it has been shut down. So had we sent our trash down there, we definitely would have been contributing to what has been an ongoing problem for decades. So I'm really pleased to learn that information. And I just wanted to let the residents know that we will still be looking at different options for our recycling in the near future, and I am actually proactively meeting with other organizations and having discussions as well to look for solutions to what is definitely an issue that we need to resolve as quickly as possible. So I just wanted to let everyone know that. And then if anyone is watching this or you're in the audience, if you are a believer, please pray for me, please, because you can see this is not easy, and this is not ending anytime soon. But I'm up for the job. I'm going to continue to stand up for myself. I'm going to continue to demand that I am treated equally. I'm going to continue to demand that I am not disrespected and that policies are not exercised for one council member versus the other. There is nothing currently in our rules, just to, again, the fogginess of our policies, there is nothing in our rules that give the council president the right to silence microphones. If a school board can have, a Westland school board can have a meeting with microphones on, and several municipalities, most municipalities do not do this. And I've been at multiple meetings, and I've called to verify this. Most people don't do this. And it would not have even been a request had it not been done repeatedly in a retaliatory fashion. So I look forward to, that will be addressed as well, because I'm not going to continue to allow it. But please pray for me, because I have three more years left, and I may just run again, you know? Or I may just run for higher office, who knows? But I'm not going anywhere. I'm going to continue to stand up for myself and the residents, and I appreciate the support of the community who has reached out to me, or those who are brave enough to come to the meetings and speak out for what they feel is just and appropriate. And finally, I wanted to just state, several of my colleagues are aware, we have lost people, I don't want to say it's an open door, but we continue to lose public safety officers. I believe one of the most recent ones, we lost a police officer to the city of Wayne several months back. And one of the reasons that we are losing public safety in the city of Westland is that we're unable to compete financially. Now Wayne, I spoke with the previous mayor of Wayne and was told that Wayne is actually considered, or a lot of people consider Wayne to be a training station because of their compensation, and then people go there and get trained, and they go where they can get more money. Well, we're losing people to the city of Wayne. So that tells you in terms of the compensation concern with some of our public safety officers. And realistically, you can go somewhere and be a secretary for more money than you can putting your life on the line and attempting to save the lives of others every day. So I actually have met with several members of the mayor's administration, the mayor is aware, and several of my colleagues, but I have had a discussion in terms of, this has been something that has been known for many years, and there's been nothing done about it other than we need to do something about it, discussion. So I think at this point, we need to take action, and I am in the process, and I'm still awaiting response from our city attorney in terms of what I need to do, but I am going to take a proactive step in getting or revising the financial structure for our public safety. I believe that we should support them more than we do, and not just during election season, and I don't have to run for three years, so this is not, I'm not up for election. We should not sit back and continue to know that there is a need and not do something about it. So I am going to propose a financial revision to assist public safety in an effort to not only increase their starting salary, but will also add bodies to the force. So that is something that I am actively working on and getting consultation here in the city of Westland and outside of Westland, so I will provide more information than when I have it available. But that will be something that I will be asking council to support, and in the event that they don't support it, I am prepared to move forward anyway to support public safety. So I will keep you posted. Thank you.
Councilman Hammonds?
Thank you, Council President. I, too, would like to congratulate Benny, Eileen, and Mary on your reappointment to the Zoning Board of Appeals. Congratulations, look forward to working with you. And I, too, also am looking forward to having some debate and discussion on getting a policy, travel policy for all elected officials here, and something that we can adopt so we can have some definitive, I guess, rules and regulations on travel moving forward. Also, Mike Londo had mentioned the WYA baseball. The baseball teams are also looking for coaches, so if anyone out there is interested in volunteering a coach, you can reach out to them through their website as well. And that's it for me tonight. Thank you.
Councilman Hart?
Thank you, Council President. It's not an April Fool's joke, even though the snow's outside, compost started today, if you can believe that. So compost pickup not only started today, and also the golf course is open. So the golf course is ready, so if you want to go out there and start swinging the clubs, you go ahead, and I'm going to go out there and duff a few balls for $15 during the week. So during the week, it's $15 for nine holes in a cart, and the weekend it's $16 for nine holes in a cart. Bring your jacket, so if you're going to go. The temperature's supposed to get a little bit better. A couple other things for all my Scottish friends, remember April 6th is Tartan Day, so I will celebrate with you wherever you may be. And at the end of the day, very briefly, it hurts me to say this, as a Wolverine, good luck in the Final Four, Michigan State. I hope you do well. Thanks, everybody, for coming out.
Councilman Hersberg?
Thank you, Council President. Bear with me, I got notes all over the place here. First, I'll just say thank you to Mary McLendon from Wayne County Commissioner Glenn Anderson's office. Thank you for your comments. You had mentioned that they're not recording their meetings, and I think all of us here would support being able to watch those. I'd like to know what the tally was and who didn't vote for that. You'd think by now that all government entities would be in recorded open meetings just like this, and residents could be watching from home, so thanks for letting us know about that. Item E on our consent calendar, it didn't get much discussion, but this was brought to us not too long ago. We got an email in our system, I'm sure we all saw the video of the crossing guard at Hayes School right off of Ann Arbor Trail, and they had a huge problem with cars just flying down Ann Arbor Trail. And in the video, he went out one day, and I mean, he caught 10 or 15 cars just blatantly doing 40, 45, running a red light there while a kid's trying to cross the street. So I want to thank the PD for being proactive and doing this fast, and we're going to have a school zone on Ann Arbor Trail near Donna Street, so that'll be 25 miles an hour part Regarding the voucher discussion, we didn't need to get into it that much like we did and have a hostile environment. It was just a dispute between was it an educational trip or was it political? So that we'll find out hopefully by the next meeting. We had an ordinance study session before this to talk about political signs, and I have a few suggestions for new ordinances. We're going to be regulating political signs, so you can only put them out so far before the election, you got to take them down so much after the election, and we haven't written anything yet, so nothing's in place. But I would like to see an ordinance on air bed and breakfast. I'm pretty sure you guys, most of you, know what that is. It's where you can post a room in your house on a website and advertise it as a bed and breakfast and have people come stay. A lot of those are popping up around town just in the last few months, and I think that we need to follow suit with other cities and even states and have these regulated. They should be able to come to City Hall and get a permit to do that. Currently, they don't have it. We don't need hotels in our neighborhood. I know we don't have a hotel as a city, but we don't need them right in the middle of our neighborhood. I'd like to also see an ordinance on plastic bags. It was mentioned by Councilman Londo, they're not recyclable, they won't be recyclable in the future. We can't recycle right now, so I think we should, as a council, try to take some steps to continue on our path as an environmentally friendly city. Some cities, even New York State right now is talking about banning them entirely, but some cities, they make the stores charge five or 10 cents for a plastic bag, and then the paper bags are free. So just to try to curb the usage of those, I'd like to look at an ordinance and ask council to consider that as well. I'd also like to look at the litter ordinance, seeing it's not being enforced or being taken very seriously. If you drive around the shop and dine district, which we advertise heavily, there's spots that just looks like a complete mess. People are running their businesses, that's their reputation, but it's also our city's reputation. We need to get out there, and we need to write tickets, and maybe if we relook at that ordinance, we could increase the penalties for that. There was talk last year during our budget sessions, council had talked about five or maybe seven different ordinances. Not all of those have come through yet, I don't know why it took a year. We talked about the noise ordinance, and we've also talked about medical marijuana, which a lot of cities are getting ahead of us on that now, so we need to have that public discussion and see which way we're going to go on that. Congratulations, Benny McGow. Thanks for your service, and I'm also glad to see that we got the ballroom named after Gene McKinney. It's been said he was the second mayor. He was the first mayor that was actually elected as Westland was a city, so the mayor was the township supervisor when we became a city, he was the first mayor, but Gene McKinney was actually the first elected mayor. I think that's it, but I would like to ask council to move forward on a study session to look at ordinances in the near future. Thanks.
Thanks. I'd like to start off by thanking our pledge students from Adams Elementary this evening, Amore Moore and Dustin Mullins. As was mentioned, we have some upcoming budget study sessions. The mayor presented the overview this evening in a study session, but the working sessions will be Saturday, April 6th, which is this Saturday, from 10:00 to 3:00; on Monday, April 8th, from 6:00 to 8:00; and on Wednesday, April 10th, from 6:00 to 8:00. And then if we need follow-up ones after that, we'll schedule those as needed. I, too, would like to thank Benny and Eileen and Mary as well for continuing to serve on the ZBA. It's much appreciated, your willingness to continue to serve on that board, and that's one of those thankless boards where people are there because they don't fall under the normal rules and regulations that apply to building projects within the city. So they have to deal with a lot of difficult situations and take into consideration what's in essence fair for their neighbors or the people that surround them as part of what they're giving a potential exemption for. So not everybody's always happy when they leave the ZBA, and so we appreciate your willingness to serve on that committee. And that's one of those few committees that council actually makes the appointments on instead of the administration, so. And I, too, would like to thank my colleagues for passing the resolution for Mayor Gene And I look forward to the naming ceremony in the near future as soon as we get all the details worked out on that. So with that, is there a motion to adjourn?